Oh, I should read the purpose of the mission so I don't get wrong. So I'll remind everyone of our mission and vision and we'll get hold on here. Vision of our Milton School District is that we believe in opportunities, achievement, and community for all. And our mission statement to support that is that the School District of Milton, in partnership with our community, prepare our students for achievement and lifetime readiness by providing opportunities for all. And on that, I will call the Board of Education meeting for the School District of Milton, Monday, July 8th. Please join me in pledging allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Rich, are you aware of anything we need to adjust on the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Rick's motion is seconded by Ed to approve our agenda. Does anyone have any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda is as we have it. Minutes from our previous meeting are in board docs if anyone wants to look at them and hopefully has.
I'll move to per the minutes for the regular meeting. How long, June 24, 2024, as presented?
I'll second.
That is Tracy's motion, seconded by Annette. Does anyone have any questions on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes are good. Vouchers are next on our agenda. They are also included in board docs.
I'll move to from general checking account vouchers, totally $1,607,502.81, as presented.
Second. Thank you. John's motion is seconded by Rick to approve our checking account vouchers in the amount that he just enumerated. Does anyone have questions on the vouchers? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Vouchers are approved. I just checked public comment and we have no one wishing to speak, so we will go past that. Red Hawk highlights, Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, it's a little bit quieter, obviously, in July. Not as many things happening in our schools. But there are a couple of things that I want to highlight. Four Red Hogs competed in the National Future Business Leaders of America at BLA competition in Orlando in late June. All four performed extremely well, but we'd like to share special congratulations to two of them for their high placement nationwide. Cooper Prop and Nolan Erickson took fourth place in the country in website coding and development. Cooper and Nolan competed against more than 80 national and international teams and earned this distinction. So special thanks to Cooper and Nolan and also to Cheryl Avery, who's their BLA advisor. And we're also proud to announce that the high school tech department will be expanding its equipment lab with the support of a grant from the American Welding Society Foundation. The grant, which is written by tech ed teacher Terry Schindler, will be used to purchase six new Millard Multimatic 220 multi-process welding machines and update the electrical systems of five of the school's welding booths. These enhancements will allow greater flexibility in welding shop and ensure that students are learning on the most up-to-date equipment available. So congratulations to Mr. Schindler for writing that grant and being awarded that grant. And just wanted to give an update on something that we've talked about earlier on our facilities. You maybe have noticed if you've toured by the high school, the work on the accessible spectator seating in the stadium is underway. There's a dedication ceremony planned for Friday, August 30th during halftime of the varsity football game against Jamesville Craig. And we will be sharing out more information on social media and in our upcoming summer edition of the Red Hawk Review on that topic.
Excellent. Anybody else? Questions for Rich on activities? All things Red Hawk? All right, Rich and I will tag team the next one. I guess you want to go first, Rich. We'll capsulize or summarize, I guess, the community focus groups. We've finished our three-meeting series and Rich will share kind of the wind-up process that we had there.
Yeah, I'll share a couple of things from that. As Joe mentioned, we have a series of three meetings for our community focus groups. Really good attendance throughout all three of the meetings. So I'm going to start by thanking the community members and staff members and board members who took part in one, two, or all three of those sessions. If you recall from earlier conversation, the first session was designed around building an understanding of the state's system for funding public schools. The second was tied to what impact that has on our school district. And then the third was to look at what that means for future budgets and what are some different possible ways to address looming budget shortfalls. The timeline of things coming up, I guess, one more thing before we leave the timeline. We kind of closed by having the group get into small groups and talk about what were their key takeaways, what questions do they still have, what do they see as any concerns, and what are some things to keep in mind or thoughts that they wanted to share with the board moving forward. And what we have coming up then is over the next two board meetings, the first, the second board meeting in July is on July 22nd, and then the first board meeting in August. And then we'll have a finance committee meeting before each of those two board meetings to look at the feedback from the community focus group. And then if the board is going to bring an operating referendum question to the voters in November, a decision on whether to do that or not, and if so, what the specific question would be, would need to be approved by the board at that first board meeting in August. So we plan on spending the next month having some conversations about what are some different options and whether or not the board wants to bring those, an option, the operating referendum option to the community in November. Anything else, Joe, that you'd add?
The only thing, I close that meeting and would reiterate my offer of sorts to the broader community to reach out to us board members, to the administrative folks, particularly Ross and Rich. If you have ideas or thoughts relative to our financial future, I guess might be the best way to say it, share that with us so that we can work that into our decision-making process. So by all means, let us know what you're thinking if you can. So that's basically all I had on that. Questions from anyone on the fallout of the focus groups? I think most of us had a chance to get some of them or all of them or whatever, so thank you for that. Okay, we will move on. Presentations come up next. Shelley Toffey and Melissa Forre. I'm sorry, I was trying to read the...
No, that's okay.
It was a little too quick over there.
So my pulver is sick. I did not want to share your journals with everyone, so I'm coming from myself. So I am going to do my best to give you all of this great information from me and this stuff from Shelley. Sorry, I think if there's anything you can see it. All right. All right, so this is our annual health nursing services report for the 23-24 school year. And the first thing, the first slide there just says that Shelley and I have 65 hours that are split between the two of us. So I work 40 and she works 25, and that's a total of 2,600 hours for the school year. The district also employs two health aides, and both of those health aides work 40 hours a week. The next slide that then talks about, it has my name, Shelley's name on there, and who our supervisors are within the Fort Healthcare School program. So Jennifer Koleski is the coordinator of the school nurse program, who then reports to the CNO, which is Lisa Johnson. These are the districts that Fort Healthcare supports in the school nurse program. So you can see the magnitude of different, some Dane County, some Jefferson County, and then Austin Rock. It is unique that this program exists. There's only one other hospital-based program in the state of Wisconsin that has a school nurse program like this. The benefit of having all of these other districts with us is we get to share collaborative resources. They get to be mentors for us. Shelley and I were both new two school years ago, and having these group of nurses that have like 150 of school nurse years combined was great for us to have. So being able to utilize them is really wonderful for us to have people that we can bounce ideas off of and thoughts and ask questions to. We also have Dr. Catherine Smini. She's a pediatrician in Fort Healthcare who serves as our medical director for our school nurse program here. She writes all of our orders that we need for emergency treatment, medications, stock medications, and then reviews all of our procedures and asks X, excuse me, as a resource when needed. The next slide, this one just shows our school nursing practice framework. Essentially in the center of it, you can see the student is our primary focus, and then their family and school community around that, and then all of the things that Shelley and I do. Care coordination, community, public health, leadership aspects, and then quality improvement. And we're kind of encompassed all around that. So Shelley and I both have our bachelor's degree in nursing. We both have pediatric experience, including students with special needs. We have a list of other things that we like to include, you know, managing chronic conditions, promoting healthy behaviors. These are all things that are super important to us within this school district. Performing health screens, handling medical emergencies, and there's a whole list of them. This past school year, Shelley and I were both able to attend the Wisconsin School Nurse Association Conference. So I went on day one and Shelley went on day two. So that was great. We got a lot of great useful information that we brought back with us, including some Skyward specific stuff, which was really wonderful for us to have. We also both participate in a diabetes webinar once a month that we do to help us keep up with all of the trends and things that are changing with diabetes with our children. And then we also participate in the Rock County School have collaborative meetings. So this is new to us this year. We were invited by the county to come once a month and sit in their meeting. We're all school nurses from Rock County Come. So that's been a really great thing for us to really learn stuff that is county-specific with the county come department. And the next slide, this is just the state statute that says that the school district has to provide the emergency nursing services, and that gives us a framework for how we develop our nursing care plans and such. And it's a lot of wording. That's essentially what it stands for. The next one, so this is part of the Fort Healthcare mission is to improve the health and wellbeing of our community. And their vision is to be the healthiest community in Wisconsin. So what we try and do is really get into the classrooms and provide education for an early age positive learning experience and how to live a healthy lifestyle. So what we really feel is important is that we're getting into these classrooms. So these are the different areas that we are able to teach within the district. So glow germ hand washing is the person on there. So we teach that to 4K students. And this year I was able to get into 10 classrooms and teach that. We did one in the beginning and taught little kiddos how to wash their hands. And we did it in a refresher in January when they came back from Christmas break. Heart power is another one. So heart power is a class that we teach the third grade students, and it essentially teaches you how your heart works, some things that you can do to keep your heart healthy, exercising, and eating a healthy diet. So I taught 20 different classes, all of which are good, great classes in the district I taught that to. And then a new thing that we started this year was myself and the Northside Leadership. We revamped a little bit of the human growth and development, and I actually was involved in teaching that this year, which is huge for me. I feel like that's an area where I should be utilized. And so I was happy that we were able to work something out with that. And I taught sixth grade human growth and development this year to all nine classes that were at Northside. With the heart power presentation, we also do kind of piggyback off that as a Tar Wars presentation. And what Tar Wars is, is I actually have a set of pig lungs that show you what smoking does to lungs. And we bring those in and we show those to the sixth grade students. I also had a, it's like a box that has candy and vapes and different things on it. And it allows them to look at that, try and determine if this thing is candy or if this thing is a vape. And it surprises how many times they got that wrong. And we talked about how tobacco companies market that specifically to try and get children to think that this vape that they're using looks like candy, so it should be okay. So that was really cool. I think the really, the sixth grade students really took to that, and it was really a great presentation. So these are all things that we are going to continue to do and that we were able to facilitate this year. We're always looking for great opportunities to teach health and wellness to our kids. So if there's any other topics that we feel would be beneficial or anyone else does, please share them with us because that's the kind of stuff that we love to do, is teach the kids in the class. This next slide, so this is a picture of a bunch of staff training medications. So in addition to teaching our students, we also provide staff training on medication administration, basic first aid, CPR first aid, stop the bleed, as well as training our medical emergency response teams. So these MIR teams, that we call them, are responsible to respond to a medical event and provide care or administer any of these potential emergency medications if there was a situation that would come up. And these are just some of the ones that are stocked in our district. Sometimes EpiPens, a kiddo doesn't know they're allergic to a bee, gets stung by a bee, so we have stocked EpiPens in our building. We also now have Narcan in all of our buildings, which is a huge, huge win for Shelley and I this year that we're super happy that we were able to get that. So every building has at least two Narcans, if not three. And we trained a bunch of staff members, that's, I'll go over that next on the next slide, but we trained a bunch of people on how to use Narcan this year. So that was a really great thing to have. So this is all the staff presentation and trainings that we did. So the DPI, Department of Public Instruction, has training modules that we utilize to teach our staff members how to properly give medications. And these staff members are required to take the online portion, and then after they take the online portion, they're required to complete a quiz. And then they have to do an in-person checkoff with Shelley or myself. So we know that they didn't feel comfortable, and they know how to utilize these emergency medications and provide these services. So there's, on here, it starts off with basic and oral medications. So 33 staff members were trained this year on how to give basic and oral medications. So that would be any of over-the-counter pills, anything like that. 66 people were trained this year on how to use an epinephrine auto-injector. So on top of all of the office staff and anyone who has a child with an allergy in their classroom, we also train gym teachers, art teachers, some of those specials teachers as well. We teach all the leadership in the building. So there's a lot of people that get trained on how to use those companies because we do stock them in every single building. Glucagon is an injectable or nasal spray that we would use for someone who has got a low blood sugar. So 12 people were trained on that this year. 32 people were trained on how to use the antiseizure medication via the route rectal nasal or in the cheek. 41 people were trained on how to use opioid antagonist, which is Narcan. So that's the amount of people that we trained this year on how to use Narcan. 47 people are trained on inhalers. Two people were trained on Cortep injections, which is a medication that we would use for a student who has Addison's disease, that means a dose of steroids. So that's what that is. 38 people were trained in CPR first aid this year. Two trained in stop the bleed this year. 12 staff members were trained in how to manage a diabetic student. 18 were trained in communicable disease and what to report and manage to the nurses. We had nine, our drills within our buildings this year. Shelley and I did one in every single building. 17 people were trained in how to provide care for G2, give a feeding or medication administration. And that is a delegatable task that we delegate to a lot of the parapro重量s. So that's where a lot of that number comes from. And then 38 staff members were trained on medical response emergencies. So 38 people are on our team for a medical emergency team. Another thing that we did this year is we also became Project Addams Certified. And what Project Addams Certified is, is that it means we're a heart-safe school. So we get credit for all of our staff members who take CPR and are first aid-trained, and we keep up with that every two years. Shelley and I get credit for the emergency response drills that we do in every single building. If you've seen in some of our buildings, we have banners that are up now that say we're Project Addams Certified and that we're a heart-safe school. Every school has one. We just got them at the end of the year, so they might not all be up yet, but they will be all up. So that's something that Shelley and I have to retrain on and resubmit an application for every three years for us to be Project Addams Certified. So that's a great thing that we did on top of the Narcan training this year. Those are two big, big projects for us that we worked on. The next one. So this, student health concerns. So this is created for each building and provided to the medical emergency response teams and the building administrators on the information that we need to know about the kiddos in the building. So this includes kids that might have an emergency intervention needed and then some that don't. As parents provided information, as well as doctor-ordered information on certain conditions. And so our total enrollment number there, and then you can see the amount of students in each category, which gives us that 21% of enrolled students are reported to have one or more chronic health condition. So again, that is parents reported or doctor reported and the ed can be both. So we can see here that it says like, there's 122 children that have ADHD. Well, we can only get that number if A, this parent puts that information into Skyward, or B, we know that there are medication that they get during the day. But this doesn't include stuff like if a student takes a medication at 7:00 AM in the morning and we don't know about it, then I don't have that information. So these numbers may be a little bit lower for ADHD, for asthma specifically. Diabetes type 1 and type 2, so we have 13. We actually have got six new diagnoses of type 1 diabetes in our district this year, which is crazy. That's a lot. So we're now up to 13. Only two of those 13 are independent, which means the other 11 are all managed by staff within our buildings, which seven of them are mine. So we have seven in the elementary, which is 4K through 6, which is a lot. And then Shelley has the rest. Middle school to high school, they hopefully are more independent than those younger aged kids, but that's still a lot of kiddos in this district with type 1 diabetes. And some of our buildings definitely felt the impact of that this school year. We have 25 kids with diagnosed seizure disorders that have emergency medications. And then for severe allergies, so you can see there's two different numbers there. So 262 parents reported that their child has an allergy, which we get that number from Skyward, but the 49 number, so that's the amount of children that have an emergency action plan for an allergy or a fish allergy or something like that, that we have emergency medication for. And then the last one, mental health is 65. I do not believe that is anywhere actually near the truth, but that is the number of people that reported their child has a mental health illness in Skyward, which I think is probably like quadruple in real life. I think, obviously, that list is not all-inclusive and doesn't really give you a true definition of what, you know, one student with diabetes entails and all of the different things that that one student requires. But it does give you a general overview of the number of kids with health concerns in our district. Next one. So this is a slide that talks about our health room visits and emergency response team calls. So health-related visits are handled by both the nurse and support staff who work in the school offices. These visits are recorded in Skyward. Obviously, the data is only as good as what's entered. So if these numbers may be lower than normal if visits were missed. But it does, it does show that districts with a school nurse have less absenteeism. They save school staff time every day. It says they, having a school nurse saves staff 60 minutes every day out of their day if they have a school nurse present in the building to be able to help them facilitate some of this health room visit concerns. This shows you, so the first number is the current school year. So elementary had 4,530 office visits. In parentheses, that's the number from last year. So that's the number we gave our presentation last year and pulled that number from. So you can see the huge difference between the school year. We went from 8,850 overall to 12,338 in this past school year. Why? No idea. Just a lot, a lot more health visits for whatever reason. You can see the levels of health visits. So, you know, you see how many health visits there are at elementary. Well, that's all of the elementary combined, still doesn't equal what Northside does. I mean, Northside does averages of about 40 health visits a day, which is a lot. So there's, those are good data numbers and good numbers for us to use to look at and see how we can maybe help adjust that and get these health visits down a little bit. The number, so like, if you look at that 12,000, 8,433 kids were sent back to class, and only about 2,000 were sent home. So we really do do our best to try and get kiddos back into class by whatever interventions that we need to do to help with that. Go to the next one. So this is a report of cases of communicable disease for this last school year. This, obviously, communicable disease is spread through many ways, body fluids, airborne illnesses, and there's different, different cases, but these are the ones that are reported to public health. So these are the ones that we have managed this school year, which is interesting to look at these numbers also. So you can see again, the first number is the number that is this school year, and in parentheses is the number from last year. Again, these are only what is reported to us by a parent or guardian or what is self-reported by the student. So we keep a running, a running log of this, and we can only report, report out what we're given. So you can see, we didn't have any cases of chickenpox, so that's wonderful. COVID decreased in half from the previous year. Hand, foot, mouth was 19, influenza was 30, imputago was 3, pedlace was 23, nana was 4, pink eye was 114, scabies was 0, and strep throat was 2.08. So we had a huge May and June of pink eye and strep throat. That's, I don't, I'm very, those numbers are crazy. Too many, 208 kids, cases of strep throat. But we had big months with those two at the end of school year. So the next one talks about medication doses. So this is part, a huge part of what our role is, overseeing the administration of regular scheduled medications that kids need to take during their day, as needed medications, insulin, emergency meds. All of those medications are all encompassed here. Students in middle and high school are allowed to self-carry emergency and over-the-counter pain relievers with apparent consent and a medical, or, excuse me, or a medical provider permission stating that they can self-carry the medication. So there's no way to count those doses that we're given. But we can, we do know that 25 students were self-carrying inhalers this year. Five students were self-carrying epinephrine. Three students were independent with their diabetic cares, and 25 students were self-carrying over-the-counter medications. Outside of that, the doses that we know and that we can count, there was 9,303 scheduled medications given this school year, 1,917 as needed, 465 doses of an inhaler given, 1,732 doses of insulin given with staff or a nurse assist. We gave zero emergency medication doses, which is wonderful. I love that number, a zero. For a total of 13,417 total medication doses given this school year. The next one. So the next one talks about our specific nursing involvement with students with individualized health plans, emergency action plans. It's really important for us to help evaluate, assess, and report in these meetings for IDPs and 504s. That's something that was one of our goals last year, was to really try and get more into some of these meetings. So you can see at the top, Shelley and I combined wrote 33 individualized health plans. We went to 23 IDP meetings. We went to nine 504 meetings. We wrote 54 emergency action plan meetings, or emergency action plans. We have 10 students in the district that we bill for Medicaid services. The total amount of revenue for the district for these billable services was $4,778.49 this year. And then we did not give any staff competitive feedback since this school year. The next one is about our immunization. The next one is about our immunizations. So every school year, we have to report to the health department, DHS, our compliance total on the 40th day of school and what those compliance rates look like. And this is a part of what Shelley and I work on in the beginning of the school year to try and get the numbers, the compliance rate high, making sure kids are being vaccinated so they stay healthy and they can stay in school. So our compliance rate this last school year was 98.59%, which 92.5% of all of our students met all of the minimum requirements. And then you can see the numbers of the amount of students who have no vaccines. So we started with the number 13 at the beginning of the school year. At the end of the school year, we were down to a number of three. So we only have three students in the district who have no vaccines listed and do not have a waiver for not having any vaccines. So that was good improvement for us to go from that number 13 down to three. We have six students who claim a health waiver, 14 students who claim a religious waiver, and then 184 students who claim a personal conviction waiver against vaccinations. So our numbers are great. That 98% is really good, so. The next one is the health screenings that we do. So we perform and arrange hearing vision screenings in the district. We routinely screen, routinely screen 4K and K1, 2nd, 3rd, and 6th for vision, and then we do 4KK and 1st for hearing. And then we try and catch any students that are new to the district. There's always also those students that I get an email from someone saying, hey, I have a concern, can you come, can you come screen those? So we also do those as well. The Edith Alliance Club assists us with their vision screening that we do. When we do find that there's a deficit, then we send a referral home to the parents and then encourage them to seek medical attention to have that looked into if it's needing new glasses or needing glasses, or maybe their prescription isn't appropriate anymore and they haven't been to an eye doctor in three years. We also do have families that have some income criteria which would allow them to get some of these services for free. So we do have some of those. You can see that we vision screened 1,343 students this year. We referred 131 and 15 of those students came back with new prescriptions for glasses. Hearing, we screened 611 and 63 of those students were referred and zero of them actually needed treatment. So that's great. The next one talks about is the Wisconsin Seals Mile. So we, we are in partnership with them to provide all of our dental health services. They provide an exam, they provide sealants, floor intrusions, and then dew cleanings. They also look to assess if there's students who need emergency services in case like they, a student has never been to the dentist before and they need an emergency tooth pull or something like that, they help facilitate, or help facilitate the student getting into the clinic without requiring any type of payment. So 132 of our students, 132 students signed up for the Seals Mile. 105 sealants were placed and then 23 of those students actually had a referral for care to actually see a dentist in the clinic. So they've been great to work with. They're super wonderful and come and they see anyone if we have a concerned question, we just shoot them a message and they come out and see them. So they've been really great. Next one. Our goals. So our 2023, 2024 goals, the first one was to streamline the field trip process across the district. So for goal one, we did meet that goal. We streamlined the field trip process this past school year, which involved a new district wide form that everyone's using the same form and that has been working wonderfully. So goal two was to collaborate with school psych slash counselors about mental health concerns because we were seeing a lot of mental health concern health office visits. And so we did meet that goal as well. We have done a lot of collaboration with them. We actually now are having our school social workers attend the Rock County Health School Nurse Collaborative Meetings with us and they're getting some resources with us and how we can work better in regards to mental health within our district. So that's been wonderful to collaborate with them. And then our third goal was to increase our involvement within the IDP slash 504 meeting process. And that goal we feel is partially met. We do feel we've been involved more than we were, but would still like this to be an ongoing goal for the next school year. So then our 24, 25 goals are to continue to collaborate with student services and case management on involvement in 504 slash IDP meetings. Number two is to develop a list of mindful interventions to assist students with anxiety that present to the health room. So we're still seeing a lot of the middle school, high school students who are coming to the health room with complaints of, you know, headache, stomach ache, or just feeling anxious. So we're still seeing a lot of those physical symptoms that may be related to mental health symptoms. So we're hoping to work a little bit closer to get a list of things that we can do in the health office to make those situations a little bit easier for our students who are presenting to the health room. And then the third one is kind of a piggyback off of the field trip thing previously, but we want to streamline now, working on the process of from start to finish, from the initiation from teachers through the date that they actually leave. So we have a good form now that we're using, but now we want to work on when the teacher decides they're going to go on a field trip, what do they do with that information and how can we get that information sooner so that we have better preparation? What we're seeing is I decide today I'm going to take my kids for a walk to wherever and oops, I forgot I have a student with a pee allergy and I didn't take their effort. So we really want to try and get in on the process sooner so hopefully that helps us be more prepared when students are leaving with teachers to go off campus. What questions do you have?
So first of all, share with Shelley, please, the thanks from the board. I, I am overwhelmed by how attentive and supportive you and your staff people are. It's one of the drawbacks when I, my board service here at this program has just the amount of information you provide and what I feel like is the support that our kids are getting just is exponentially more than maybe where we were in the past. So thank you for everything you do on behalf of the kids. One question I would have as we went through the data there, number of visits, medications, et cetera, seem dramatically higher than years previous. Does that align at all with what your cohorts see in other districts, other areas?
I think yes. When we, so we all kind of put our data then together and we look at it globally for healthcare based. And we are seeing an uptick in general of medication dosages that we're giving, but I think we're still the biggest. And, and I don't know why that is. We, we have the most amount of office visits and we have the most amount of scheduled medication doses given.
So it triggered a question for me, and this is both administratively and school nurse, if we see further increases, are we able to meet their needs with the number of people and man hours that we've got?
That's a very good question. I, I think that this past, the previous school year, 22, 23 was our first school year here. And then 23, 24 now is our second. And we have seen a dramatic increase from our first year here to our second year here of the amount of high need students that need our attention and our support. I mean, I have seven, seven students with diabetes that are 4K through 6. Two of them are brand new diagnosed this year, which is a huge undertaking. That's a lot. Sarah can speak to that, you know, because one of them is in her building who doesn't have nursing support, has her staff support. So that, that, I mean, same thing at East, we had a diagnosis of one at East also who does not have nursing support, just has her staff admin assistant support. So I think that we are doing a good job between Shelley and I on health days of meeting the needs the best that we can. But I, I do think that those numbers are increasing and you can see, you can see that.
Quick question.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Speaking of numbers, the 21% chronic health condition, where does that stack with the other districts?
So that number, I haven't seen others. We have a meeting at the beginning of August where we go through everyone's information, everyone's data. So I haven't seen that number in comparison. I only asked about the other numbers because I was surprised how high they were also. And so I reached out to them at the end of this school year, which Shelley and I were putting that together. My guess is similar. My guess is similar. We have the highest enrollment of all of these other schools. So if you look at Ford Atkinson is the closest to us numbers wise. They have two 40 hour per week ORNs, so they have two full time nurses. And I would guess that their percentage is similar to us. They just have a lower number of enrollment than we do. But I would guess, I would guess they're probably close.
So yay, you've been our guest.
Yes.
I asked that question last year. I think that's a fabulous addition and a really easy way to save a life.
Yep. And we have been using twice.
Twice. I carry it and pray I never have to use it, but I have learned if even it's expired.
There's one here. There's two in this building.
That's fabulous. So great job on that. Quick question I had was the minimum requirement on the vaccination. What is included in that vaccination number? Is that just the at birth, what it, what is?
No, that's the all, so it's, it's specific to their age. So like as soon as they hit kindergarten, their requirements for their kindergarten vaccines. So it's appropriate to their age. So for looking at 4K kids, their minimum requirement number is different than what a kindergarten minimum requirement number is, but we take that into consideration when we get that number. So also there's new vaccines that you have to get when you're going. Well, it just changed. It used to be your DTAP going into sixth grade, now it's your DTAP going into seventh. So that number is a little weird. It'll be better, but the minimum requirement is based upon how old you are and what your requirements are for your age.
Gotcha. So would the HPV or the COVID vaccines be included in those numbers?
COVID, no. HPV, no. They're not Wisconsin required. The new ones that just came out in March are now that you have, the DTAP was moved from six to seven and you're required now to get your meningitis vaccine. So you need to get one meningitis vaccine before you turn 16, freshman year is what they say. And then if you get one, if you don't get that one, then you need a second, you need a booster or your first one between the ages of 16 and 18. So you can get two if you get your first one early, otherwise you just get one. So that's now required. It's meningitis and then that DTAP change. But COVID is now a required vaccine and either is HPV.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good question. First of all, piggyback on everybody else, awesome job. Thank you for all the hard work you did. A part of it. Question, we need to get over the schools and their schools just compare data. Are you guys agreeing in advance the metrics and the way you'll collect the data? Is it consistent in all the different districts?
So this, this data that all of these numbers comes through for healthcare, we do that all, everyone does the same exact thing. So it's all this like PowerPoint is like linkaded for us. And we, Shelley and I spend a lot of time tailoring it specifically to us. And then everyone else does the same thing that they present to their boards. So everyone's looking at the same exact thing. And then most of the numbers actually get reported to DPI. So we input a lot of this stuff into their system. They have a template that we have to fill out and that's, that's every school district has to fill out that same template stuff.
Awesome thinking. Great job.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to share that partnership with Ford Healthcare is a really strong partnership as well to share this was, we just finished our second year with them and Melissa and Shelley do a great job. So thank you for presenting tonight and for the work with our students and staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. This Lance is uneasy in his chair. He's got into the podium.
Talk back to follow us.
We have another annual type of report from Lance Knutson, our activity sort of MRC director. So.
Take it away Lance.
Hey, good evening. We're going to go through this here. This is our yearly stuff. I started this in spring, so kind of from last year to this year, spring, summer stuff. We'll, we'll, we'll review here. Right now, first one on the board here is going to be the baseball softball. We're obviously in the middle of that with that. We got a couple more weeks here left. We started enrollment in March, April, started practicing in April, and then we'll run games here for a couple more weeks. So our softball league, we, we took part in the Rock County League like we did last year and we moved baseball from Ford Atkinson to Rock County. The reason why is just because we, we have a good fit with what we were doing with softball and felt we moved baseball there just to talk one big, complete span and type thing with that. So we moved it from Ford to the Rock County to make it easier with that, to stay consistent so I haven't 15 different side rules type thing. So, so we're all on one page with that with Rock County. We do a lot of other things with Rock County too with light football, so I'll get that and we'll talk about that in a little bit. So we're moving on that. We're just fully done. We'll be done here, like I said, in a couple weeks. Number wise, we're, we're really well, we're right on pace of what we were last year with everything. And then we also had our 4K through second grade. All of that is our in-house stuff. That's our T-Ball, Coach's Pitch. We call it a minor league, which is a glorified Coach's Pitch, kind of more secondary to our game, game atmosphere type, type look. So that is, that's what we do. And that's all in-house, like I said, that started in May. We waited till the coast turned on more all day to get that started and then we'll be done in the round, same time still will July, we'll be done with our baseball softball stuff. With that, so, and then I put the numbers up here too from totals from last year to this year. We're right on par for like for the baseball, for baseball softball, we're down nine, nine students from last year to this year. We got uptick a little bit of softball, a lot of that's with travel baseball, travel softball, travel sports in general is pretty big right now with everywhere. So for these numbers, I've been really happy with these numbers on behalf and we're staying consistent enough for that. So and then the little guys, the 4K through second grade, we're, we're higher out this year by two. So, and I can tell when we have big groups coming through because like our little hitters are kindergarten, first graders will be big and then they'll follow through and then like our second graders who are will be smaller. So I can tell when a district you're on plateau a little bit there. So on the next page here that I have is going to be swim lessons. We did something a little different this year. In years past, we would do high calm sessions. So we would have five sessions, three, two in the morning and three in the afternoon. Mornings were 45 minutes in length, the afternoon was 40 minutes. I kind of felt like we, we were losing our power towards the end of our lessons with just structure and just keeping it on pace and all that and keeping it, keeping it interested for the kids. So we changed it up and went to a half hour lessons. So we were able to gain three other sections during the first, first swim lessons in the morning, two in the morning, yeah, two in the morning and then the, the two in the afternoon. So we went half hour sessions and it seems to be a way better fit for us. A lot of compliments with how we're doing it and how we structured it. Kids are more active, they're, they're more engaged. We have smaller class sizes. We used to have about 25 students, now we're at 20, just a lot more one-on-one instruction with our lifeguards and our swim instructors. We were able to get more class sizes that are 10, we're able to reduce that down to two instructors instead of one or whatever. So it's worked out very well for us with that. And, and our numbers, participation numbers last year was 397 and right now, this is 392, but that has changed already today because today we started our third session and I've got, I had six people who were removed today alone. And then we still have a fourth session to go. So we're going to gain more people. I can tell like when, when summer school gets out, people are trying to get into other activities and that swim lessons is a big one for us. So with that, we, we went to four sections of it. So like we started on June 10th, the Monday after school got out. Our sections are eight days, so it's four, Monday through Thursday, take Friday, the weekend off, and then come back Monday through Thursday. So it's eight, eight sections or eight, eight days of swim. We tipped obviously July 4th off last week. So we're able to go June 10th to the 20th, June 24th to July 3rd, and then today, June 8th to the 18th, and then one more session of July 22nd through August 1st is how we got that. So that's a really, really good positive outlook for us. And I, I like how we changed, we did a lot of check with other people, locations and check with our guards and what they needed to be successful and we came up with that, that plan. So the next one is our Marlins Swim, Rock Marlins. We do daily practices, 11:15 to 1:15. And when we, we've had five meets, or sorry, we'll have five meets, we've had two so far. We've got three more to go here, a couple, and we'll be done the end of July. So I guess, I think I should, first is our pub day where we're done, we'll do our little inner squad, fun activity day, type thing on that, that week. So nice to meet you here, our open swims. So, nice to meet you here is our open swim for the public. We do that twice a week during the summer. We do a one fifteen and two thirty-fives on Tuesdays and Thursdays. That's been highly, high program wise of people showing up, just been good so far. And it'll get better with the heat coming in here next few, next couple of days into the next week. So, that's been good for that. And then going into the fall, the fall stuff, we will start flag football. We actually started registration opening today. We'll get that word out on more than the year I was able to launch out. We kept the same structures we have in the past with 4K first grade will be together now. We are in-house league, so we'll keep them here. Second grade, third grade will be combined and fourth, fifth grade will be combined and they will participate in the Quad County League like, like our softball, baseball does. We may possibly do a sixth grade league. The issue with that is that's a huge transition for, for kids to go from tackle to flag. So, we never really know what we're gonna get. We offer it. The Quad County League, we used to be able, we are, we used to have a sixth, sixth grade league and had some different structures with grades where our systems together and, and that, but other communities, their tackle programs are different than ours where we tackle earlier. They do, they start out in sixth grade. So, they don't, we don't offer for the Quad County or flag football. Last few years, last two years I've offered it sixth grade only. Two years ago, we were able to have three teams. Last year, we only had like eight kids sign up. So, it's one of our, it's kind of a wait and see type thing. And we just do a waiting list and if we get enough for three teams, so we kind of run robin, then we'll, we'll, we'll run, we'll run a sixth grade league too. But that just kind of depends on what we have for numbers with that one. So, participation numbers last year were great. Surprise, surprise, moments of both. We had good numbers in that. And it's, it's crazy because we'll have three or four teams in our communities, we'll have one or two, we'll be, we don't have to travel very far. So, it's, it works out for us with that, with the Quad County League. So, for the fall, winter stuff, we do MRAC dance with our instructors in Chelsea and Maddie, and they do a wonderful job. And this thing is probably our, my most popular activity that we do. We had a hundred and thirty-seven people last year. The auditorium in, in June was sold out with seven hundred and forty-one tickets. I think there's one seat open for the recital. And it was a great hit and it's, it's crazy. It's, it is, they're packed from, they start at four o'clock at night and they're not out of there until about eight, eight-thirty. So, and it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays for classes, and they do a great job with it. And it's been a great hit of just kind of a, a limb of, of another being a studio closing down and asking, and so let's try it and see if it's, if we succeed with that. So, I, I see it happening again. I can see our numbers, numbers growing again like it did last, last year, two thousand twenty-two was a hundred and thirty-two, this year's a hundred and thirty-seven. I could see going on. So, it's been great with that. Gymnastics, we're gonna check into that again. Last year we weren't able to with our, it just didn't work out with our coaching staff. But we're gonna look to do that again this year. I got some emails out there. It looks like it's gonna, there's a chance of it with that. So, we'll have a kindergarten through third grade, and it's a tumbling class, and then a four through six, which is going to be actually been basically low level gymnastics level type class. So, we'll do that for four weeks. Probably help for sure once we did not too, depending on instructor type numbers we have with that. So, and then with that, also with the winter, last year we did some in the fall slash blade in the winter, we did some stuff with our volleyball coaching staff at high school. And we've talked a lot about doing a, there's a medal league out there, which is basically our recreational league. And we're looking into getting involved with that now to give another more options for people to, to hop into sports and volleyball. I talked to our coach, Katie Kennedy, she's done a great job of helping me kind of get started rolling this stuff with contacts and what to do. So, we're gonna look to, look into doing that to be around a lot like our, our baseball softball stuff with going to be volunteer coaches and set up a keeper low key, practice once a week and play games on, on the weekends in different communities. And it's local communities around here, so it's like Cambridge, Edgerton, Jefferson, Ford, something like that. So, let's just give another option for, for people to, to sign up and do some stuff here. Our year-round stuff is live swim. We do that in the mornings and evenings, pool parties, our water zumba, which we, we've done for the last couple of years here. And then we do a partnership with, uh, martial arts, and that is a fall, spring session that they do, they put on. We help get kids for that. And it's just a basic intro to martial arts. So, that's what we got for that one. Not as long.
Lance, a quick question. So, the, the Quad County League obviously lists some communities that are quite a ways from us. We don't really physically play those, Williams Bay, Geneva.
We, we do. So, we, what we do for the league is we split. So, we stay at Quad County, but there's an east and a west. So, we, we are obviously in the west, we're the furthest community to the west of us. We play Delvin, Alcorn, I'm trying to figure, Delvin, Alcorn, Whitewater, Palmyra, and East Troy. So, East Troy and Alcorn kind of flip back and forth depending on the numbers that we have. Meaning like if we have twelve, we go six to six, but we may have more teams in the west, so then we'll increase it to eight and four type thing. We used to do a crossover with it and then that just gotta be too much travel. Like I take my kids, so they went on a Tuesday, which is West Ham, where are we going? You know, type thing. So, we don't travel that far. It's a lot of, a lot of the communities that, that it looks like it's far, but it's really not. It's really pretty much just no farther than the lane to you by the swag. So, it's not too bad. It's not too bad. It's like within forty minutes, forty thousand is the most, type thing. So, and they, and obviously with, what, what I've noticed with doing this for many years ahead, like Mel has a very good base of, of participations. So, we have the most, initially have the most numbers for teams. So, we don't have to travel a whole lot. So, like we have three or four teams, we'll play each other for sure once or not twice. And if we have twelve games, well, if we play everybody twice, you know, you're doubling it up and then you've got, you know, six home games, six away games. Well, three of your home games or our away games are many teams around anyway. So, it works out to be pretty good with that. It doesn't, we're not as much travel as it looks like. So.
How long have we been in that Quad County League?
So, the, the way we started was with softball. We were struggling with numbers for teams and we would just play two or three teams and we were just playing each other, you know, nine to twelve times. Well, that gets pretty old, pretty, pretty tired and some. So, we did a lot of research, we looked around and found this Quad County League and got into that. And that was probably back in two thousand eighteen, seventeen, somewhere in there. And it's just been a good fit for us. Sixteen, something like that, it's been a good fit. And we, and the flag football, they already had that established, we joined then. And then with, with the baseball was, was, was four for many years, it just was a better fit for this because we do everything with Quad County and we know the guys working there. And there was a changeover in court. And they just, it, it didn't, not that it wouldn't work, because if we did it last year, it just was about a fit for us and we were Quad County. They wanted to do some more things and we wanted to do. The vision that we wanted for our recreation was the same as the Quad County, so that's what we went with. So.
Lance, on the flag football, what's a team structure size? A lot of men or?
What's that?
A lot of men football or is it?
So, for flag, it is seven. Yeah, it's seven. So, little kids, so K first grade or five, and it's a shorter, shorter field. It's like twenty by, or thirty by fifty, whatever. And then on the, the other leagues are, are seven and it's a bigger field.
So, like forty kids in K, you can get four teams.
We, we tried, yeah, we tried, I tried to keep the numbers down. So, if there's five on the field for like that, I like to have three to four on the bench. And that's kind of like, so eight, nine in, in a team. And honestly, also depends on coaches, what I can do for coaches. So, for volunteer baseball, and then we, and that's gotta be fit with that as well. And it just, it, sometimes we got stacked, it's a little bit more higher than what we want to, but you can't find people to go, so you have to do that. So.
Anybody else? Well, once again, thank you Lance. It's a wonderful report to give, but thank you for your. Keep those kids, keep those kids active. Okay, we'll move on. Four on the agenda is our twenty-four, twenty-five student family handbooks, broken out by grade level there. Who's walking us through this?
We have the handbooks available, Eboard docs at each grade level. We don't bring those for board approval, they are just information for the board and availability in, in, in board docs, allow community members to get their eyes on those too prior to them going out to families. There, there always are changes as the year goes on, if there's things that need to be updated, so they're, they're never really in final form, but anytime we make any changes once they've gone out to parents, we update parents about any changes that are made. I think rather than running through each of those, if we can, we can answer any questions that board members may have about the, about each of the handbooks.
I, I had two points. First one, on the 4K six, it's got the Board of Education listed. Just a suggestion, I think that should be on the other two as well. I didn't see it there. Just a suggestion. And on the high school one, it just had the wrong date for the lunch menu. It had twenty-three, twenty-four still, or for the lunch prices.
And I had similar, the middle school one, there is a mission revision of the libraries and it talks about a vision for the whole district. So, then maybe we should consider having it in all, in all in books and let's see. I couldn't find it in the other rooms. That was the library mission vision. Maybe it's not all of it, it's a little.
Rich, that's page seven for the high school lunch prices.
Alright, we will check on that. Those all seem like good ideas.
And thank you for all the suggestions because it means you're reading them.
Yeah, any other suggestions I made, possibly, I think the fonts are different.
Wait, it's now we're getting paid.
Well, just saying readability, maybe there should be some kinds of good parent stuff, kids in multiple grades.
Worked hard to get our, our 4K through, through six, all on the same page for their handbooks and, and we'll work on finding a common font for, for all of our schools to, principals might need to play a little lap paper scissors.
There's only two of us in here.
It's fulfilling. I had to wait to take some vacation. This is one of the more.
Alright, well, thank you for that. Alright, we will roll on. Presentations are done, little handbooks are done. HR committee report, Rick.
Okay, HR committee met last week on July first. The only item on the agenda tonight is discussion of possible action of twenty-four, twenty-five teacher contracts and salary matrix. After implementing the district's collective bargaining offer of a three percent increase of teachers' base wage, the payroll and HR departments have updated the twenty-four, twenty-five teacher salary matrix and contract template. The new salaries will reflect the twenty-four, twenty-five additional contract compensation approved on April twenty-second and the teacher longevity compensation approved on May twenty-eighth. With approved tonight, the payroll and HR team will merge the contracts and send out the approved contracts to each teacher. In board docs, you will see the updated salary matrix, a template of the teacher contract and a list of the staff who will be receiving those. Any questions at all about that?
Chris, did you have anything else to add to?
Nope, nothing to say.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five teacher contracts as they are.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Rick's motion is second by Tracy to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five teacher contracts as they are presented in board docs. Questions from anyone? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That clearly passes. Alright, then that will complete the HR committee, but not relieve Rick of his duties because he chairs policy and that's also gotta come in.
And thanks, Joe. The policy committee met last week on July second. The agenda includes the first reading of the Niola and other policy updates. In board docs, you will see a list of the updated policies up for first reading tonight. I will give a brief review on some of the updates and then ask Rich and Ross to jump in and update the board on some other new and updated policies. Policy one hundred definitions has new language stating that the district will designate one person to be the district's official records custodian in our district. That duty is given to the district administrator. Policy one seventy-one point three clerk has an updated language which reflects job duties of the clerk or who the clerk may designate to do such duties. Policy twenty-two fifty innovative and pilot programs contains new language regarding the evaluation and selection of new programs. We saw an example of this updated policy in action at our last board meeting with the adoption of the new K-five math curriculum. Policy twenty-four thirteen health education contains new language regarding parental notification of what will be taught in health education courses and how parents can opt their student out of the courses. Policy also states that the student is not to be penalized for not taking the coursework, but that the district administrator may determine if the student is to complete an alternative assignment. Policy fifty-five seventeen student anti-arrestment now contains language that allegations of harassment conduct directly directed generally at a group of students are prohibited and are to be investigated accordingly. Policy sixty, policy sixty-one eleven internal controls, sixty-one twelve cash management of grants and sixty-four fourteen, also principals spending in federal funds contain language that was previously in policy sixty-one eleven administration of grant programs. These policies help to ensure that district assets are safeguarded against waste, loss or inappropriate use. Policy seventy-five forty technology contains revisions to help ensure the security and proper usage of the district's technology and investments. There are a couple of policies with some pretty substantial changes, so I'm gonna ask Ross and Rich to help us out with this. Ross, if you could talk to the board please about policy eighty-three ten public records.
Ross is coming up and getting ready. A couple of quick updates on questions that came up at the policy committee meeting on some of the other policies. There was a question about a policy where it was striking the legal guardian language and, and the policy, original policy said parent or legal guardian, and legal guardian is, is no longer in the policy. In our definitions, policy, policy number one hundred, it defines parent as including the legal guardian. So, anytime in any of our policies it uses the term parent, that by our adopted definition also includes legal guardian. So, we will see pretty often when we bring policies for update, that if it does say parent or legal guardian, the legal guardian will be struck because it's redundant. It's included in that, in the definition of parent. Another question that came up was on the citizens advisory committees, policy ninety-one forty. And in that policy, it talked about when there is a citizens advisory committee, that the board would, I had to find that exact language here. Appointments to citizens, to advisory committees shall be approved by the board except as otherwise provided in policy or required by law. And citizens advisory committees, as referred to in this policy, are specific to committees that the board is, has, has deemed us to have. It might be the board saying, we wanna form a citizens advisory committee to look into some specific topic. It wouldn't include just regular committees that, that our schools may have or that our district may have that involve parents. And then the other question was around in, in policy, that was, that was policy ninety-one forty. In policy ninety-one thirty, which is public requests, suggestions or complaints, there are different parts of that that speak to different types of concerns that, that people may bring. And in one of those, it has four different levels. In the fourth level, if the person starts with teacher or coach or whoever the, their initial question is with, and then proceeds to the principal, the district administrator. There's a fourth level that where it details how the person could go then to the school board with a concern. If you recall, we had a situation like that a few months back. But then there's another section later on that talks about considerations if the concern or questions around curricular materials. And in that section, our previous language ended with what in the other one was considered level three, which is bringing their concerns to the district administrator. And the new Niola recommendation included a, an additional statement to that that kind of reinforced what was already there, but that the district's administrator's decision will be final. There in that, in things that are specific to curricular materials. There's a little bit of contradiction and maybe some confusion. There's a little bit of contradiction, and maybe some confusion on that, because there's also a statement before it breaks up into those different parts, that the board can always review the district administrator's decision, if they choose to also, which kind of contradicts the statement later that the district administrator's decision is final. I reached out to Niola and our legal counsel on that, and they are looking into if there is, or what might be a better way to word that. Part of it might depend on if the board is, and, and we can bring that information, we'll come back for second read in two weeks, but part of it might depend on if the board has interest in having a fourth step for the board with curriculum material. We, we haven't had, in the years that I've been here, we haven't a lot, had a lot of challenges to what's considered curriculum material. There might be some questions at times, but I don't know that it's ever risen to a point where someone hasn't been satisfied with the answer that they got in those first three levels. So maybe if the board wants to put some thought into, if they'd like us to update that policy, when we bring it back for second read, we can continue this conversation, because I'll have more information on whether there's any legal or, that we in the past or other districts have put that language in place, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay, Rich, sorry. So on policy ninety-one forty, the citizens advisory, would the human growth and development be considered a, I mean, it says in the policy twenty-four fourteen that citizens advisory committee shall be established, so I would imagine that would fall.
I think that, I think that that policy, the citizen, or the, the human growth and development, has its own, a separate policy for that one, you, you just made the, the policy number for it.
But it says in accordance with board policy ninety-one forty, so I'm, I guess, is that being considered a citizens advisory that would be board approval to get?
Let me zip back to the human growth and development one quick, and so I can refer to what you're asking.
It's the third paragraph from the bottom.
What was the policy number again?
Twenty-four fourteen.
And you said the third paragraph from the bottom, where it says the board authorizes the committee to submit, or citizens advisory committee shall be established in accordance with policy ninety-one forty. So, yeah, that policy points back to that citizens advisory committee, so we should have, we should be bringing the makeup of that group to the board, and we'll make sure we do that this fall, when that group gets rolling.
Your time for a question on fifty-five seventeen. What was the support for including a group of students in this policy? What was the background for that?
Give me a minute to get to that one. Could you share again which policy, Tracy?
Fifty-five seventeen. The change was from a student to a group of students. What was the?
That is, so that if there is some type of harassment that's occurring, not, it doesn't have to be, to be considered harassment, it doesn't have to be just to a specific student. It could be a, a student, one example might be a student that is harassing members of a, of a sports team. And it might be one member of the team one day, and it might be other members of the team a different day, but they're maybe walking by practice and yelling derogatory things to that group of students to be considered harassment. It, it needs to be ongoing, but this, this inclusion of that section means that it doesn't have to be to the one student all the time, if it's directed toward a group of students.
Thank you.
Ross?
Hi. Wanted to give everyone a brief update about record retention and why you're bringing it up now. The legal update that was provided by Niola, last year, the Public Records Board for the state of Wisconsin approved what's now called the General Record Schedule for Wisconsin Public School Districts to lead records, commonly referred to throughout this as GRS. This replaces the old record retention schedule, which was called the Wisconsin Record Retention Schedule for School District, WRRSSD, Munch Force acronym. Regardless, that went into effect in twenty-ten, and the GRS that was established last year supersedes that. So the board already adopted the old schedule back in twenty-ten, so we don't need to take any action there. But the reason we're talking about why the new GRS matters is, the Public Records Board made a decision to split out the record retention schedule in accordance with statute eighteen-twenty-one sub-six, speaking to the seven-year statutory requirement for most records, and the GRS was specifically tailored to school districts for only those records that school districts would regularly expect to have. Every other record that applies to any other municipal entity within ten other schedules approved by the Public Records Board. If you're wondering what that looks like, it looks like this. So what this means for us is, we have a decision to make, because all of the records that were previously governed under the twenty-ten schedule are now no longer governed by our record schedule the board has formally adopted. So we've worked with our legal counsel and with Niola to talk about our options. We have options ranging from do nothing, maintain only the GRS that is already in approval superseded by the twenty-ten schedule, and backlog everything else to a seven-year statutory requirement. But that creates a number of retention problems for especially electronic records, or things that may be of large file size, such as surveillance records we might have, or the cameras on our premises. I'm sure I don't need to tell some members of our board how much that would entail. So there are ten other schedules included in the update for policy eighty-three ten, sorry, pardon me, that speak to the record retention schedules under possibility of review. Those ten schedules are identified in the Niola some policy, with the, from the GRS that is mentioned, to administrative and related records, budget-related records, facilities management, et cetera. I won't go through all ten of those. But you'd be surprised, if you were to look at some of the information in these schedules, these apply to all municipal entities that might have these records. So while we would still be looking at only those that we maintain, everything we do maintain is maintained somewhere in these eleven schedules. The Department of Public Construction has provided a crosswalk that is going to be maintained on an ongoing basis, that we can then refer back to, so that we know which schedule to reference when retaining a certain schedule, or retaining a certain record, and that any schedule that we adopt in this manner would be filed with the Wisconsin Historical Society for proper logging, so that we know what we have these count for. So the recommendation we're going to be pursuing is to adopt the remaining ten schedules, at which point, if we do go that route, the board policy would need to be updated, identifying which schedules we adopted and on what date, and then we need to file ten separate records with the Wisconsin Historical Society indicating that what date we did that, and so that's on file. That's the board.
Well, Ross is, is up at the podium. Any questions on that policy? For those proposed changes to that policy? Thank you, Ross.
Okay, thank you, Ross. And then there is another new policy that I'm, invest Rich to speak to, it's policy twenty-two sixty-four, non-discrimination on the basis of sex and education programs or activities.
We have our current policy, twenty-two sixty-six, that is, has been in place, and we are adding an additional policy, twenty-two sixty-four, in response to recent release of revisions to federal Title IX regulations. On, in April of twenty-twenty-four, the Office for Civil Rights from the U.S. Department of Education released twenty-twenty-four Title IX regulations, and in response to that, Niola has developed a new policy, twenty-two sixty-four, and is also keeping, recommending that districts keep the current policy, twenty-two sixty-six, which was originally drafted after the twenty-twenty Title IX regulations were put in place. The new regulations have a, an implementation date of August first of twenty-twenty-four, so school districts across the, the state and across the country are kind of moving in, in mode to have new policies and plans in place, because that goes into effect and needs to be implemented by August first of twenty-twenty-four. The reason that the old policy, twenty-two sixty-four, stays in place is because if there are claims of some type of sexual harassment that occur prior to August first, whether those claims are, are come over the next couple of weeks, or they may come in October, but it's about an incident that happened prior to August first, then we would proceed with the old guidelines that are in place right now, and for any claims or complaints that happen after August first, then we would proceed under the new guidelines. The new policy, twenty-two sixty-four, is broader in scope than, than the old policy. The twenty-twenty-four final rule covers all forms of sexual discrimination, not just sex-based harassment. It includes pregnancy discrimination, unequal treatment based on parental, family, or marital status, discrimination of employment, and the Education Department has yet to issue final regulations pertaining to Title IX mandates relative to student athletic participation, so we're expecting those to come out at some point over the next few months, but that hasn't been issued yet. What the new policy does contain are some updated definitions, including a definition for complaint, definition for complainants, and for hostile environment harassment. It also includes a new definition of pregnancy or related conditions, and it has a significant amount of content pertaining to protecting students and employees who are pregnant and or having related conditions. There's also changes in the grievance procedures, which provide greater flexibility to districts, including the ability to implement an informal resolution process, as long as there's mutual agreement of the parties without the formal process needing to be filed first. The twenty-twenty-four final rule expands the district's responsibility to address sex discrimination that occurs in any setting, which the district asserts disciplinary authority, so it's not just for incidents that might occur in our schools. It could be on a bus, or at an away event that's taking place. It's, it's, it gives us the responsibility to address any type of sex discrimination that occurs in any setting where we as a district assert disciplinary authority. Also, the twenty-twenty-four Title IX regulations expressly state that discrimination on the basis of sex includes discrimination on the basis of sex stereotypes, sex characteristics, again, pregnancy or related conditions, sexual orientation, and gender identity. There are some court cases that are, are going on across the country. Some states have injunctions right now that are pausing the implementation of this. Wisconsin does not have any injunctions in place right now. We're covered by the Seventh Circuit, Circuit Court of Appeals, and they have not had any rulings on this. So our legal guidance is that we need to have this in place in order to follow the law, we need to have this policy in place. We're bringing it for first reading today, and we'll bring it for board approval two weeks from now, so that we can meet that August first deadline. There are also significant changes in what's required for training for staff, so we are planning upcoming training, and with implementation and approval by the board in two weeks, we would begin undergoing some of the staff training this quarter.
Thank you, Rich. Any questions? Can you circle back to the athletics part that you said? I think you said it wasn't quite released, and how does that differ from the current kind of line world that we live in?
Yeah, the way that it's written right now is that the, the feds have yet to issue final regulations regarding pertaining to Title IX mandates relative to student athletic participation. And then your second part of that is, how does that relate to what we do now? The WIAA has a, has a guidelines for participation, and we follow WIAA guidelines. If the feds change what's required, then it likely would lead to some type of change at the WIAA level, and we work closely with them and, and follow the guidelines that they put in place. So they, they thought that their, what, what legal counsel has shared, and what Niola also has shared, is that it's unlikely that any specific guidance on any changes to student participation in athletics is likely to come out until after the November elections. So we kind of are waiting until that comes out.
So one thing I'd like to highlight, and I brought this to Rich's attention today, is I did read, and I know that the email you sent me, thank you, states that we are applicable to the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals, but I did read, read the entire ruling, and I had asked to table this, and Rich and I disagreed on that, because I read it as though children that are attending schools of the affiliated legal challenged plaintiffs, they have until the fifteenth of July to submit. So we were technically, we're possibly putting into first read a policy that as of the fifteenth would have an injunction. Am I wrong on that?
Yeah, I think, okay, I can add more to that. There, one of the states that, or one of the circuit courts that has had an injunction that's located in Kansas, and, and as Tracy shared, that's put in place to, or was put in place to create an injunction in the state of Kansas and a couple of other states, and as Tracy shared, any states where organizations that have members across, in, in different locations across the country, may have students or their, or their parents be part of those organizations. And the, the court order in that hearing that, that just took place last week, was that those organizations have until July fifteenth to, to get the court a list of all of the schools where they have students that are attending. So there may be something that comes out after that goes to the court. The court may increase the injunctions that are in place beyond the states that, that are impacted right now. Our legal counsel goes through Niola and our own legal counsel, and, and statewide organizations are monitoring both that injunction and that, that court case, I guess, and, and other injunctions that have come out, so that if they do either through this one, or at any point in the future, then we would potentially need to update our policy, or, or change, pause, or change, or update our policy based on any new legal guidance. But the legal guidance right now is that, that August first deadline is approaching. Us and all other school districts as of right now, in Wisconsin, need to meet that guideline, or we would be out of compliance with, with federal law. I think it's a good point to bring out.
Thank you.
I appreciate you bringing it up, and, and it's something that, that we want to make sure that we continue to monitor.
And the other question I had, so you said that you will train the staff, so is there DOE issued training for the staff, for the changes?
I don't know that it's necessarily DOE issued training. I think that different organizations are putting together training based on the DOE guidelines. And there's different training for different levels. There's some training for all staff on, so that staff members are alert to what is considered sex harassment, and what, what needs to be reported under the guidelines, and how to report it. And then there's specific training for the, the Title IX coordinators. Chris Tukendorf is our overall Title IX coordinator, but Julia Gershensky and Jeff Spivak are also Title IX coordinators. They kind of organize, if we get a Title IX report or complaint, they're the ones to kind of look at it and determine what our next steps would be. But then all of our principals will have additional training than staff get, because our principals typically then would be the investigators, the ones that would look into the issue and, and make a determination on whether it does fall under Title IX guidelines or not, and if it does, then we'd look at, do we, are we able to have the parties agree to an informal process, or do they want us to go through the formal process? The formal process is pretty involved as far as the investigation that needs to take place, the communication, the- take place, the communication, the possibility of grievance process, and supportive steps that we put in place for the person that brings the complaint, and possibly for the person who the complaint in, while the investigation is taking place.
And then would there be some type of communication to students related to the changes?
Yes, for sure, to students and families.
So they would understand what the new requirements are, and the new law?
Yep.
Rich, would you be able to send out a summary of some of that legal stuff you mentioned? I think you said Kansas, there's an injunction, whatever. Not to spend a lot of time on whatever you do have, but you just, what she had as feedback was, just so, I don't want to create extra work, but then be able to have it before next week.
For sure. Thank you. And I'm going to keep the board updated if there is anything that happens between now and then, keep the board updated, or if anything that happens after.
Rich, do we anticipate, as we move beyond August 1st, presuming that we adopt twenty-two sixty-four as our new number? Or not? Six, twenty-two sixty-six is our current policy, and they overlap greatly, right? With the exception of some definitions and some broader applications.
You're correct that there is a lot of overlap. Twenty-two sixty-four isn't throwing out the way that Title IX has been addressed in the past. It's been adding on and creating more clarity.
Yeah. My question was, is if we get beyond August 1st to some level where we assume or know that there aren't any complaints for this window leading up to August 1st, would we rescind our current policy, or is there any redundancy that we got to get rid of?
Potentially, we would want to keep both in place for a while, because somebody could make a report in January of '25 about, about something that happened in July of '24.
Right.
But at some point.
At some point might be able to.
Sure.
Rich, could you just speak briefly to barring any changes in these court cases, if the board failed to adopt this before August 1st?
If the board failed to adopt it before August 1st, we'd be in violation of federal law, which would open the district up to lawsuit, both penalties from the federal government for not following federal law, and the potential of a lawsuit from a student or staff member for not protecting their rights.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, we're not approving anything tonight. This is all first reading, and we'll come back to the board in two weeks for possible approval and adoption. Any other questions or anything? Okay, thank you. That's it, John.
All right, thank you, thank you. Okay, that's the bulk of our regular agenda. The miscellaneous piece is very similar to all agendas. A is our staffing report.
I'll make a motion to approve the staffing reports presented.
Second. Thank you. Rick's motion is seconded by John to approve the staffing report. Does anyone have questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. Gifts and donations are also included in board docs for you, or the?
I move, Rich, please, we get some donations of gratitude.
I'll second.
Thank you. And that's motion seconded by Tracy to approve the gifts and donations to the district with our ongoing gratitude. Questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That clearly passes. Meeting dates, Rich?
Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is on Monday, July 22nd at 6:30, two weeks from tonight. Between now and then, we have two committee meetings that are both on the same night. Both of them are on Thursday, July 18th. We start with the Finance Committee meeting at 5:30 p.m. And that's Finance Committee, July 18th at 5:30 p.m. And we will follow that up with an HR committee meeting at 6:30 p.m. on that same night. If board members who are not part of one committee or the other wish to attend the other one, or if you're not on either committee and you wish to attend, all board members are always invited to attend. The Finance Committee meeting will be starting our conversation about the cost of the operating referendum, so it may be a good time if board members are available to kickstart some of that conversation.
You said HR was directly after, 6:30?
Yes, yep. Scheduled at 6:30 or immediately after the Finance Committee.
All right. Good on dates? Okay. All right, we have an executive session scheduled, so I would entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight-five, sub-one and sub-C, which is considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Our topic tonight is twenty-four twenty-five administrator and supervisor compensation and contracts. So moved. Second. That was Rick's motion seconded by John. Questions usually are none. Ed?
Yes.
Joe is yes. Rick?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Annette?
Yes.
That is unanimous. We are in executive session, and we potentially can reconvene.